All right, I have seven o'clock. I'm going to go ahead and call this meeting to order. Will the recorder please call the roll?
Counselor Dyer?
Present.
Counselor Gervin?
Here.
Youth representative?
Here.
Counselor Fleck?
Here.
Counselor Merideth?
Here.
Counselor Savish?
Here.
Counselor Zennan?
Here.
Mayor Solzner?
Here.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. In the history of our life, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right. So if anyone is here because of what was put in the register guard that we would be picking a new city manager or going over some applicants for city manager, that's incorrect. So that won't be happening tonight. So sorry about that. So we are moving on to special presentations. Item A Cottage Grove Police Department and South Valley Fire and Rescue Midyear Awards.
Thank you, Mayor. City Council. Good to see you. Forgive my voice. I'm still recovering. Hopefully, I'll make it through all this. And we have a lot of guests here that are here because of this tonight. And so just before I forget, thank you all, family and friends, for being here. It really makes these things even more special. So Captain Marsh is going to help me as we go through all these. And Mr. City Manager, where would you like folks to come and stand where they can be seen in the camera best?
Where you're at is good.
Okay. A little crowded behind me.
What about you there?
How about we, if we have a mayor, would it be all right if we had him to come up here?
Absolutely.
Let's do that.
Yes, absolutely.
So as I call your name, you'll pause here and then you go up to the front and take some pictures. Okay. So our first award tonight results from an incident that occurred on May 17th, 2023. At about 1:00 in the morning, dispatch received a call of an overdose and forwarded the call to medics while also notifying Cottage Grove Police Officer Colin Walsh. Officer Walsh arrived on scene in less than a minute. He found a person who was unconscious and not breathing. He also noticed that the people attempting CPR were performing it improperly and ineffectively. Officer Walsh immediately took over CPR and, while he was providing CPR, provided Narcan until the patient regained consciousness and began breathing on their own. As medics arrived, the patient was able to stand and walk. As a result of his actions, we are proud to recognize Officer Colin Walsh and present him with Cottage Grove Police Department Life Saving Award. Congratulations. Our second award tonight is from an incident that occurred on May 19th. Kind of a busy week, obviously, 2023. At about 7:45 in the morning, dispatch received a 911 call stating a person had collapsed with difficulty breathing. Dispatch forwarded the call to medics while also notifying Cottage Grove Police Officer Derek Carlton. He's on his way back from the call, so. Maybe I should read really slow. No. As Officer Carlton was responding to the location, additional information came in. Dispatch learned that the person was, in fact, in cardiac arrest and CPR was in progress. Officer Carlton arrived on scene and located a patient that wasn't breathing and had no pulse. Officer Carlton took over CPR and continued compressions until Southland Fire and Rescue were able to apply their automatic CPR device. At that point, Officer Carlton continued to assist paramedics as they treated the patient, eventually regaining a pulse and administering an AED. The Southland Fire and Rescue Medic 201 Crew included firefighter paramedic Jerry O'Grann, firefighter paramedic Amanda Huckins, and captain paramedic Doug Leida. Also responding were division chief Aaron Smith and then-division chief, but now deputy chief, Justin Baird. After transport, we learned the patient was conscious and breathing by the time they arrived at the hospital. As a result of their actions, we are proud to recognize Officer Derek Carlton, firefighter paramedic Jerry O'Grann, firefighter paramedic Amanda Huckins, captain paramedic Doug Leida, division chief Aaron Smith, and deputy chief Justin Baird, and present them with the Cottage Grove Police Department Life Saving Award.
Yeah, you have to come stand up here for a picture. Congratulations.
Super. Thank you guys. Good job. Hopefully, it's not lost on everybody that. Perfect, okay. That, for these folks, they would pick things like this where they need to be recognized because they would say, you know, I just responded to the call like I do every call and did my job. But you have to understand the impact it makes when somebody is literally, not to use a bad phrase, but literally is, you know, at death's door and/or perhaps is worse. And through the actions of these folks that respond, it's completely changed. That became, that was never more poignant until I had a family member that actually, at a very young age, collapsed of a massive heart attack, should not have survived, but for the actions of first responders that brought him back into rhythm, got him to the hospital where he could have the surgery and the treatment. And it's impactful. So thank you all. Anything, Officer Carlton sent you in? And so I will repeat, we're proud to recognize Officer Carlton and grant him the Cottage Grove Police Department Life Saving Award. So can I be bothered to have you guys come up for a group picture, too? We'll get one of them and then we'll do another group picture.
Sorry, lady.
That's all right.
Do the codes.
Okay. Now we'll squeeze in there one more time. All right, very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
So our story on that morning does not end there. After the life-saving efforts, Officer Carlton, division chief Smith, and deputy chief Baird realized that the patient had been pouring concrete and that it was wet and unfinished. It was a warm day and they knew that it was going to cure improperly. It was, and anybody that's seen what happens when concrete cures improperly, it's a mess, it has to be torn out. And they knew that was not okay because of the heat that that was going to happen. So those three stayed on scene and finished, literally finished the concrete for the patient so that when he came out, the job was completed. So as a result of their diligence and their commitment to community service, we are proud to present Officer Carlton, division chief Smith, and deputy chief Baird the brand-new newly-minted Cottage Grove Golden Trow Award. Thank you, guys.
Oh, that's pretty cool.
Very cool. One more time. Custom made, you'll never see it after a few minutes.
So was it trial finish or a brute finish?
What you do.
Before you prove it.
So we're going to finish up our time tonight on your agenda, Mayor. It says, I think, swear in, introduce, swear in Fuji. From the time we planned this until this evening, we also added another dog named Rip, which you've probably read about, I think, on social media or some Friday update. And so Rip is our patrol canine. So Cottage Grove has a very strong history of having a patrol canine program. And we had been working to get that back and we just were very blessed to have an opportunity present itself through Oregon Working Canines where we got an experienced, fully-trained, extremely valuable dog that was donated to us and completely free, which those dogs can go for upwards of $15,000. And so this was just really great. And if you've heard me talk enough, you know I talk about relationship building and being relevant regionally, and this is the kind of stuff that happens when you do that. So we're going to start with Rip tonight so that Officer Carlton can bring him in and then bring him out and go back to work. But I, Rip and Fuji are two completely different animals, right? And so Fuji's really easy, she'll look you, she'll pet you. That's not Rip's job. So I'll let Officer Carlton kind of explain that and then he'll go get Rip.
Yep, so thank you. So basically, so Rip's going to be a four-year-old Belgian Malinois. He actually came from Pierce County Sheriff's Office, I believe. And so when I bring him in here, so like he said, so Rip is an apprehension dog. So what that means is we use him for totally different things, whether for tracking, finding like a lost grandma, all the way to apprehending a suspect that has created a violent felony act or something less. So when I bring him in here, he's going to have a muzzle on, but don't be intimidated by that. The reason for it is just in case he gets a smell of something for our safety and everybody else's, we just do that just so he wouldn't bite anybody. I haven't had any incidents like that where he has done it with anyone. I've been training quite a bit with him all the way up from Eugene, and then he's with me every night, but he's not ready to deploy yet. So with that being said, give us space when we come in. I'm going to try to come up and get in the front of the room so everyone can see him, take some pictures. But I've just asked nobody to, don't reach out to try to pet him or anything like that. So I will go grab him, all right?
All right. So while he goes to get Rip, we'll bring Fuji up and get that done. Yeah, Fuji's going to come. Yeah, she's going to pause on the way. All right. By your call, do you, Fuji, promise to attend to the well-heated Cottage Grove Police Department, its members, and its committee, and basically perform the duties of a patrol canine during your campaign with Bear Day? So I want to give a brief bio. So Fuji is two years old this month, actually. She was born in Mexico and we got her out of a breeder gang in California. She spent about two or three months of her nutrition period. She actually lives openly every day, she's a veteran. She is not really this old at all. She also has three small dogs that are part of her race, just her house. She's just got to love. She's a sweet dog. At times, she gets a little bit, but she's great. So forever out of dog, dog has taken her up and given her lots and she loves kids and she'll be sleeping in them. So that's Fuji. She's a, she's a great dog. She can't walk. She even wanted to shake her. So Fuji, he mentioned, Captain Marsh mentioned the training. He, she received her AKC, American Kennel Club Good Canine Certificate, or Good Citizen Certificate, so, which means she reached a level of obedience and behavior, all that good stuff. Here you go. No? They didn't get a call, was it? They got a call? Oh. So Derek left? Oh, okay. Any questions? Apologize for the delay. Any questions about the canine program or either of our dogs?
How will Fuji be deployed?
Pretty much as you saw here, so Fuji's in the building. Her job is to make everybody feel better, which is kind of an innate quality that dogs have. But through her training, she's just, she just puts herself in situations and is present. Beyond that, if we have victims who have suffered some form of trauma, we could also introduce her into that to help them feel better. So those, the dogs like Fuji have been used very successfully in situations like that. So she'll, it really kind of, she doesn't get particularly deployed as much as she's always on the clock when she's here, unless, like I said, there's some specific circumstance we could introduce her into.
Thank you, Chief.
Fuji is a Labrador Retriever. And Captain Marsh mentioned she was bred in Mexico and her breeder is actually a American Kennel Club top dog breeder. So they've bred Best in Show, other dogs have been Best in Show. So she comes from good stock. He sees someone, he sees you. So do you want to, here's a paper. You just want to read in that paper? And then say, he'll give you a handshake and that's about all there is to it.
All right. So it's going to be Officer Rip. By your call, do you, Rip, promise to defend and protect your handler, the Cottage Grove Police Department and the community, and will you basically perform the duties of police scanning your containment surfaces? Clear.
Just, can we give you a handshake or something? That's good. We don't need to stress them out. Okay, you're done. Okay, that's all about. Mayor Council, thank you for your patience.
Thank you.
While we work with people that are on the way. Oh! See, I told you I would do that. Yeah, just read it and we'll be back.
Mayor, Council, staff, thanks for making this part of your agenda. You know, I don't think there's any greater honor in our business, police, fire, or otherwise. I've done both in my career, tend to be recognized by your peers. I think that is probably the best honor you can have. And over the course of the last several months, if not year, I keep hearing one name from Cottage Grove PD come up a lot in association with helping our crews out on calls, if not being the first one there and doing things that actually have an impact. And that's Officer Derek Carlton, who actually got his start with us. So I am, as fire chief for Southland County Fire and Rescue, recognizing him for distinguished service to the community. And the citation reads, "This commendation is presented in recognition of outstanding community service through Officer Derek Carlton. Following a cardiac arrest call on May 19th, 2023, Officer Carlton, having no expectation to do so, remained on scene to assist with finishing a concrete slab for the family of the patient. This commendation further recognizes Officer Carlton's assistance to the district on various occasions for providing care to injured or ill persons until our personnel arrive. These actions are a direct reflection of Officer Carlton's commitment to his service. On behalf of the board of directors and myself, we thank him for his service." This is the citation along with a uniform ribbon that is fully authorized under the Uniform Codes in the state of Oregon to be worn while he's on duty. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. I think he's coming back.
It's interesting that Chief Fuji mentioned that he, Derek started as a firefighter and then became a police officer, which is, makes sense because every firefighter wants to be a cop, right? And every cop wants to be a firefighter. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. I think we should start every meeting like that. Okay, items to be added to the agenda, I see none. Appearance of interested citizens for items not on the agenda. This is a time for citizens comment on items not listed on the agenda for a maximum of 30 minutes. Individual speakers must be recognized by the presiding officer, provide their name and address, and will be allowed up to 15 minutes, or five minutes or less with council approval. Comments regarding any matter scheduled for a public hearing may be provided only in that hearing. Comments on agenda items may be taken prior to council discussion on that item. The council will not engage in any discussion or make any decisions based on public comment at this time. However, the council may take comment under advisement for discussion and action at a future council meeting. All right. First person we have signed up is Linda Olson.
Thank you, Council. I'm Linda Olson, 1305 Gerard Avenue. I found it interesting to read in the August 10th issue of The Chronicle that one of three councilors currently under recall consideration mentioned their concern that these recall efforts could cost local taxpayers upwards of $15,000. Where was the concern for fiscal frugality when, on July 31st, the council as a whole approved $174,000 of wastewater reserves to be used for installation of utilities to a newly annexed privately-owned property on Sixth Street that is being redeveloped after recently approving water sewer utility fee increases for the community residents by 12% to offset wastewater treatment and equipment maintenance costs. I was not surprised on Friday, August 11th, when one city councillor recommended on the KN and Beeper Show that citizens should contact Community Sharing for city utility payment assistance. He also mentioned that citizens could donate money to the city to help residents who couldn't make ends meet, as these funds were then forwarded by the city to Community Sharing to disperse. My next question was, what percentage of these private donations are being retained by Community Sharing as administrative or processing fees? Where was the concern for fiscal frugality when, on July 31st, the city council committed $2.8 million in future taxpayer dollars to purchase 61 private property acres located partially outside the city limits in a time-sensitive process? Documents showed that this purchase must close by the end of September before the current city manager retires. This locally-owned property was reported to have been on the market for many, many years and was referred to as "too high of a financial risk for private investors to realistically develop," but apparently not too big of a gamble for local low-income taxpayers. I ask again, why can't the city pause this purchase until we complete the hire of a new city manager? The same August 10th issue of The Chronicle notes that city manager Richard Myers stated that he's never seen a recall of councilors in his 26 years of office. Well, times are changing. Many residents are now questioning long-established normal processes. The same three councilors stood firmly when they voted to approve a two-year, $200,000-per-year contract for the homeless shelter on Horry 99, knowing that future funding was unsecured and questionable. They also voted in favor of repurposing the city-owned Douglas Street low-income housing property to become one more unhoused and unmanaged overflow campsite. The city now owns three unhoused resident properties, and our population is growing. Citizens are becoming, I mean, excuse me, citizens are becoming more aware of past administrative actions and questioning the norm, where city administration and city council decisions impact local residents' bottom dollar, asking whether these decisions are in the best interest of the entire community. Citizens are having conversations with and about the increasing homeless and unhoused population moving here from larger cities. Citizens are talking about the leniency and accountability for any resident who chooses not to abide by established laws, city ordinances, and regulations. Citizens are coming together and talking, person to person, and posting on local social media venues, asking questions, expecting answers to their questions from local government agencies, and transparency in these decisions and accountability. Citizens are following their tax dollars more closely and have asked, where is the benefit in these decisions for the entire community and the impact on the low-income taxpaying residents of Cottage Grove? What is the return on the investment for our community when mom-and-pop businesses fail to thrive and close? How many empty buildings do we need? How many more recreational pot shops do we need? Where is the community succeeding? Where do we draw the line for the financial decisions that local taxpayers and community members apparently have no voice or vote on? Thank you.
Thank you. Mike Bork.
Good evening. My name's Mike Bork. I live at 310 North Douglas. I was going to talk about this a couple of weeks ago. I fell right down the correct thing, but what I want to do is talk a little bit about the water pool. And we seem to be able to get consultants to tell us what we want to hear, but not really what we should be hearing and truly taking a look at. I'd have much rather seen a consulting group come back and say, these are ways we could save money here, does things better with money we've already put into the system, which has been quite a bit, and we seem to be just keep dumping money in. I'm a numbers guy. Took a look, and we already said it was about 10 and a half percent raise in our water rates on top of inflation over the past two years. It's been around about 16% the last two years. And what I've been doing is, I've been out canvassing a little bit, talking to people, and I did not realize what state of income a lot of these residents we have here in this town. And most of, a lot of them were on Social Security and making $800 a month, per month. And we just took, you know, 1% of their income a month just with water. And then the week after you guys took a price increase, our city decided to put free water at Douglas Street and for unhoused, and that water runs about 24 hours, 20 to 24 hours a day, nonstop. If you look at that half acre that they're not supposed to be on, it's part of the green grass that we have. So I called the city about it. So I called the city about it. I was told that we don't pay for it, doesn't cost me anything, but that's false. We all paid for it through our taxes to do this stuff. I'd just like you guys to take, you guys go forward on things, to take a good look at what trickles down to the rest of the people out there that are actually paying taxes and doing stuff here in the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Item six, public hearing, there's none. Consent agenda.
Move approval.
We have a motion with a second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item eight, resolutions and ordinances. Resolution authorizing full faith in credit borrowing and related matters. Staff report by Public Works, Mr. Stewart.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Council. So on July 31st, 2023, the city council and authorized the property purchase and sale agreement to purchase 61.06 acres of R2 Zone property from Grace West Properties LLC. The resolution authorizes the borrowing of not more than $2.9 million in principal to pay for the property purchase and associated borrowing costs. The resolution also authorizes the borrowing of $2.5 million to pay for Cottage Grove Wastewater Reclamation Facilities Clarifier Number One Reconstruction Project and Four Sewer Main Line Reconstruction Project. The projects were approved in the adoption of the 2023-24 City Annual Budget. Staff is working with DA Davidson, Banner Bank, and legal counsel on selling bonds to cover the purchase and wastewater improvement. Approving the resolution will allow Banner Bank and DA Davidson to proceed with acquiring the funding necessary for property purchase and the wastewater projects. The staff recommendation that city council approve the resolution authorizing full faith in credit borrowing and related matters. To sell the bonds will fund the purchase and associated closing costs. The street water, wastewater, storm, and park funds will purchase the needed property for the new infrastructure and easements on the private property and the sale of the remaining property where we pay the remainder of the debt. Wastewater fees will service the debt for the wastewater improvement projects.
Any questions? Resolution number?
2110.
Councilman.
Madam Mayor, I move that the council adopt Resolution 2110.
Second. We have a motion with a second. While the recorder please call, any discussion?
Yes. I just wanted to emphasize, I know there's been a lot of criticism about this move. This is going to bring industry and the much-needed housing to the area, including affordable housing. It'll give the city a chance to plan a development and have developers bid on shovel-ready land that can be developed into a mixed-use community that will enhance our overall livability in Cottage Grove. So it's an exciting project, and it's one where we can mix public and private to make something that will benefit all residents of Cottage Grove. So I urge that all councilors support this move.
Councilor Irvin.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, and just in community conversations, I've heard a few questions about this and the expedited process, and our taxes are going to go up to pay for this. One of the reasons why I was in support of this, and am, is that, for one, there were their conditions on the sale of the property that'd be sold completely, and the fact that we can divide it up, which is, you know, a process that the city can walk through more expediently and get, you know, industrial park lands of the size and capacity and access that can bring industry in. And there's no guarantee about what will come in, but it is ready and it is a more viable plot of land with access. So increased opportunity that I think the city is uniquely poised to take advantage of, as well as the development side of it on the other side of the river and the infrastructure pieces that we've already been preparing for. There's a lot of pieces that come together in this. Also, at a time when we are, for lack of a better word, scratching our heads about how we're going to manage the funding of other key infrastructure pieces, whether it be the roads, you know, system development expansion, and this afforded, also there's risk involved in it, there's no guarantee, but what seemed like a very viable plan for covering the expenses to alleviate elements of our housing shortage. Not, in addition to those, things are really important to me, like career development and education opportunities and high-paying jobs that can come from that area. So I'm supporting this in full faith and those that are running the project, that they have this experience, that what they're saying is reasonable and likely. I'm excited to see what comes of it. And we'd like to see other lands that we have available looked at for potential similar multifaceted benefit to the community.
Councilman.
So, yeah, and everything, you know, Councilors Mayor Day and Irvin said, but also, gosh, when I first got on the planning commission 23 years ago, there's this little thing called the comprehensive plan. And in that is a transportation plan is one of the components. And in that transportation plan for the last 23-plus years has been future growth of our transportation system, which includes running Gateway all the way down along the freeway until Cleveland, running down Cleveland and across there to 99 from the industrial park down our street and all the way back, of course, to Main Street. And this is a big circle that's supposed to help with traffic in our community. And I thought about this a lot in the last few months when they've been doing work on the connector, because we saw Main Street, which is traffic backed up, you know, for, you know, gosh, blocks and blocks and blocks. And that's one of those things that if we don't work on our future growth, we're going to end up having issues like this. So, you know, bringing these collectors in so that we can manage our traffic well is really important. So for all the other reasons and that, I absolutely support this as well.
Well, I want to say I thought long and hard on this as well. And the major player in this for me was, we're not allowed to share, but the company that we're looking at and how exciting it could be for our community and those high-paying jobs. Also, the housing element, of course, is a big deal. I just got back from a mayor's conference, and they were talking about how many of the cities were doing exactly what we're doing. And so that kind of supported it for me, too. And there was a lot of leaders in that room that were questioning, you know, should we be in this business? And it's a gamble, but it's just kind of where we are today, that, you know, we need some of that buildable land. And it wasn't so much of a rush. It seems like that, but the rush is more about the company than it is about purchasing this land at this time so that we don't lose out on that opportunity.
All right, no one else has anything? While the recorder please call the roll.
Councilor Savage?
Aye.
Councilor Senate?
Aye.
Councilor Drier?
Aye.
Councilor Irvin?
Aye.
Youth representative?
Aye.
Councilman Fleck?
Aye.
Councilor Mayor Day?
Aye.
Mayor Solsky?
Aye.
All right, motion, resolution carries. All right. Item B, resolution amending the comprehensive fee schedule. Staff report by our finance director, Ms. Liggins.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. The city's established a comprehensive fee schedule which includes a listing of all of the fees that we charge for various goods and services. This resolution amends the fees associated with the municipal court and the fee schedule by removing the payment agreement fee, the extended payment fee, extended diversion fee, extended probation fee, probation violation, and the docket citation reopen fee as they are no longer imposed by the court. The expenditure fee is also removed to comply with Senate Bill 397. It's staff recommendation that the resolution amending the comprehensive fee schedule be adopted.
Councilor Irvin.
Thank you, Mayor. From the reading of this, I would expect the answer to be no. Nothing else has changed except for removal, but did anything else in this?
Nothing else has changed, sir.
Then I would make a motion. This would be 2111, that the council adopt Resolution 2111, amending the comprehensive fee schedule.
Second.
We have a motion with a second. Any discussion?
Just let's choose for the record, we're removing fees, yay!
While the recorder please call the roll.
Councilor Senate?
Aye.
Councilor Mayor Day?
Aye.
Youth representative?
Aye.
Councilor Drier?
Aye.
Councilor Irvin?
Aye.
Councilman Fleck?
Aye.
Councilor Savage?
Aye.
Mayor Solsky?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you. Item C, first reading of ordinance amending Section 2.56.030, appointed council's fee of Title II of the Cottage Grove Municipal Code. Staff report by the city manager, Mr. Myers.
Thank you. On October 28th, 2013, the city council adopted the current hourly rate for the appointed council. This is for those court-appointed attorneys that serve in municipal court. In the last 10 years, it's been, as we've moved in the last few years, it's been more and more difficult to recruit and retain court-appointed attorneys. And so the judge and the court has asked for the council to increase that hourly rate for the court-appointed attorneys to be $75 an hour with a maximum of $750 for cases that are resolved without trial and for 1,500 max for cases resolved after trial. This would, they believe, would increase the number of court-appointed attorneys that would want to come and serve in Cottage Grove. Currently, that rate is $50.
Any discussion? Oh, ordinance, oh, ordinance number?
Ordinance number 3175.
3175. Councilman.
Madam Mayor, I move that the council adopt ordinance number 3175.
Second.
We have a motion with a second. Any discussion? While the recorder please call the roll.
Councilor Savage?
Aye.
Councilor Senate?
Aye.
Councilor Mayor Day?
Aye.
Councilman Fleck?
Aye.
Councilor Irvin?
Aye.
Youth representative?
Aye.
Councilor Drier?
Aye.
Mayor Solsky?
Aye.
Number nine, business from the city council. Approval of change order for the secondary clarifier one rehabilitation project. Staff report by Mr. Stewart.
Thank you, Mayor. So on May 8th, 2023, the city council awarded the secondary clarifier number one rehabilitation project RNG excavation. West Joe's designed and prepared the rehabilitation project based off of as-built plans and field inspections of the clarifier. During the demolition phase of the project, RNG discovered that the concrete floor thickness varied from three inches to five inches, and the rebar designed to strengthen the floor in many locations was laying on the gravel base under the concrete. The as-built plan stated that the floor concrete thickness would be a minimum of five inches in thickness. West Joe's rehabilitation plan called to use the original clarifier floor as built. After discovering the variations in thickness and the reinforcement still was not in the concrete, West Joe requested the existing concrete floor be removed and a new eight-inch-thick concrete floor to be built. The cost to remove and replace the clarifier floor is $268,154.80. The change order also includes additional quantities of materials to refurbish the existing clarifier tank walls. Once the clarifier tank walls were sandblasted, it was discovered that concrete walls were worn more than the visual inspection had determined. It ended up, when it was sandblasted, there was cracks that weren't visible from the outside until it was sandblasted. The change order includes increasing, increases in materials and labor to restore the clarifier tank walls to the designated specification. The total cost of this work is $138,000. It's staff recommendation that the city council approve change order number one for the secondary clarifier one rehabilitation project for $46,154.80. The full faith in credit borrowing through Banner Bank and DA Davidson will fund the change order. The wastewater reserve will service the debt. No increases in fees are needed for this additional work.
Any discussion, questions? Councilor Mayor Day.
On this illustration, the studs, is the wall going to be added to thickened up? Mayor, Council Mayor Day, that picture was intended to show you those little tabs. So what's taking place in that picture is, is they seal the cracks that are in the crack wall, and those little tubes that are sticking out are how they inject the straightening material into the cracks. So they seal the crack on the outward, and then they inject the crack with a product that reinstabilizes the concrete. And then there will be a layer of a material that will be plastered on the tank, just move it out and redo the thickness of it. Thank you.
Councilman.
Thank you. You know, I didn't think about this Friday. How is this going to impact our timeline? Because I know we're trying to get this, you know, back up and running before our, you know, heavy season with rains and all that fun stuff.
Mayor, Councilman Fleck, we still believe that we are, we might have two additional weeks. So the request of the contractor was to have it back in operation by October 15th. This may push it to the first of November. It's getting to that point where it's a little uncomfortable because we could have a high rainstorm come in, but traditionally, we don't see those till later in the year. So they're doing everything they can to keep us on track to finish ahead of the winter season coming.
Thank you.
Councilor.
Thank you, Mayor. I mean, I don't like being in this position, for sure. I'm sure nobody working on this project does. The things that come to mind are, you know, we have a bid process. We see some pretty serious variation in, you know, the pricing for things. I think concrete work is no exception of what can be anticipated. And so I understand that we're under this constraint of having to get this thing back in operation, and that really ties our hands to do anything else. But I'm just trying to think what, you know, how could this be prevented in the future? I mean, when we have change orders, do we have, is there ever the process of putting the change order out to bid as well to validate or look at that? Because that seems like a way to just not have any cost protection. You know, with $400,000 for concrete work, I must be missing a significant amount of, like, expertise that go into it. This is something, what, twice as big as this room? Or 800-something square feet? Eight seventy or something like that?
So, Mayor, Councilor, Irvin, I don't have off the top of my head the dimensions for the clarifier. It's rather large. It's multiple times bigger than this space here that we're in. I would share with you that the price of the materials is locked and the labor's locked. So when they bid, when this company bid on it, there was quantity, prices set, the materials, and the labor. I also remind you, this was the only bidder that we had for this project. So we are going with the prices that were bid on the project back in May of this year. So they're not, this isn't a brand-new cost. It's an inflated price for the materials and labor. It's what was approved in the contract. So I feel pretty confident that the costs are, you know, locked in. They're not, you know, some sort of inflated price. What I would say is, I don't know what more we could have done to anticipate that the floor wasn't built to the specifications and the approval. Somebody approved the project. They must have known that the concrete wasn't built toward the thickness, but that was in 1970. And the as-built showed that this project was built to the plan set. So as much as I'm frustrated with having to spend the additional money and trying to do the diligence, it's just like I requested the contractor because we don't see, we're in the rebuild phase now. we're in the rebuild phase now, we don't see any anticipated additional changes to the price of this project, and I asked them to really, I only want to take, if possible, one change order to the council and not have 14 or 15 like other projects that we've had to deal with. So I don't know what more, it's like sandblasting the walls. If a crack doesn't appear, it's not like we can just, that, this project started over two years ago, the planning stage and everything. We needed that clarifier to be operational, so we can't go in there and bore holes and do depth checks on the floor. We couldn't, you know, sandblast a section of the wall to determine whether or not there was going to be some unforeseen things. What was wrote into the contract was anticipating that there might be increases in those items, and it gave us a mechanism to lock in the prices so that there was no changes. So if the contractor hypothetically, material, labor costs were, would have increased from when the contract was awarded in May to today, which is in August, they, they can't increase their prices. They, they're doing the project for what they did for it.
That information helps, I appreciate you sharing it.
Thank you. Anyone else? No? All right. Counselor Fleck?
I move that the city council approve change order number one for the second, secondary clarifier one rehabilitation project for $406,154.80.
Do we have a second? Second. We have a motion with a second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Item B, ad hoc street improvement and funding committee council report, staff report by Mr. Faye Stewart.
Thank you, Mayor. So on May 22nd, 2023, the city council adopted Resolution 2095, which established the ad hoc street improvement and funding committee. This evening, we have with us Chair Amber Baylor. Will be, she's here this evening to give us the city council a report and any recommendations to date that the committee has.
Good evening, thank you. Mayor, councilors, I'm here representing the ad hoc street improvement committee that was established, as they mentioned, in May, and it's comprised of yourselves, eight residents, and one youth representative. So we've met five times since we kicked off in May, and during that time, we've become a lot more educated on the state of our streets, current and potential street improvement funding options, and the election campaign processes. We've also established a vision instead of objectives for the committee. I wanted to share what our vision is. It is to improve the quality of our streets through a fair and equitable use of funding means that improves and maintains the city streets to a PCI rating of 72, which is a good rating, for the long-term improvement of property values and livability in Cottage Grove. Our objectives are to provide a funding package recommendation that supports a level of quality of 72 PCI, is acceptable and of benefit to the community, and includes a suite of options in consideration of marketing for success. And that's just the Cliff Notes of our objectives. There's more detail in the minutes online. We've also determined the soonest anything would be added to the ballot is May 24th, and that came out of one of our sessions specifically on election and campaign processes. It's taken a substantial amount of time to digest all the information needed to make an informed recommendation, and we are awaiting additional information to finalize our recommendation. While the committee has been meeting, the public works department has continued to make street improvements. Just over 330,000 has been spent fiscal year-to-date on the street budget. Some of the streets improved since July 1st, or North River Road, South Main Street, and West Main Street. Lane County has restripped the sealed, the chip-sealed roads along with repainting all the street stripping within the city. The city crew will be spending the next two months improving the sidewalks, stop bars, directional arrows, and the railroad crossing markings. The new stop sign at Douglas and the Strander Street will be installed in about a week. So with all that, work has been progressing as we've been meeting. Our request to the council is that you approve an extension on the timeline for the committee to continue to meet and formulate a thorough recommendation through year-end with the assumption that nothing pertaining to street improvement will be put on the ballot until May 24th.
Anyone have questions for Amber? Counselor Savage?
Thank you so much, Mayor. No questions, but thank you so much for leading this group. I was not able to attend every meeting, but the meetings I did attend, there was thoughtful communication and questions and ideas put out there, so thank you for your report, I really appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you all. Counselor Meridie?
Yeah, I just want to also commend the citizen members of the committee that have given up their time, and thank you, Bob, for being here tonight, and we're very faithful and knowledgeable, and Amber really kept us on track. I mean, we get all that, that many people with that many ideas, it was difficult to keep the cats in one direction, but you did admirably.
Mr. Stewart?
Mayor, thank you, and I'd like to add, I'd like to thank our youth representative, Cassidy, although she hasn't been able to make every meeting, but she has been reading the material, and she's communicated several times to Counsel Irvin some of her comments and thoughts. I think it's really important, or I believe it's really important that our youths are involved in this process because they're going to be the recipients of hopefully this hard work and improvements in our, in our community, and it's nice to have their involvement.
Counselor Fleck?
So, well, and thank you again, yes. I mean, we go through reading all this stuff all the time, and so it's really great that we have other citizens. And I was going to say herding cats as well, because councilors can be a little feisty and hard to reel in sometimes, so thank you. Quick questions for staff, can we by consensus just move forward, or do we need a motion? If so, do we have a timeline, you know, that's adjusted for the new election deadline that we would want to extend it to?
I don't know what the deadline for the May election is yet, but we would want a motion because we did have that before, setting with that.
Can we just do it date nonspecific?
Yeah.
Just extend it as long as it takes? Then, then I'll move that the council extend the deadline for the ad hoc committee until such time as we make a determination.
Second. We have a motion with a second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Amber. All right. City manager recruitment proposal, staff report by Mr. Myers.
So you've received four proposals, and we've copied those for you as well tonight, so you have a copy, but one from GMP Consultants, one from Jensen Strategies, one from ElCog, and one from Prothman. You can see different styles. Your objective tonight is to look at those, determine if you want to interview, if you want to interview all of them, if you want to interview one, if you want to interview two, or whatever you want to do, how you want to move forward in selecting a consultant for handling, walking you through and helping you through the process.
Counselor Fleck?
I guess I'll start. So I took our forms, which actually I would have maybe regrouped some of the questions a little differently, but by and large, I was able to kind of come up with a score, you know, to come up with them. My number one choice was GMP. You know, their price was in, in the middle of the pack as far as the proposals we had. Their experience was really excellent. There were just a huge volume of jurisdictions that they've helped over the years, and, and so that one was a very high score for me. Their timeline actually was one of the, you know, quicker, I will say, ones, ending in potentially in November, in mid-November. In the educational professional, I had excellent record, liked the brochure samples, liked the plan. Ability to meet, I put as good because they are not as local as some of the others, so that was one of the, the lower numbers. And then knowledge seemed to be excellent. I gave them an overall score of 77, and then just to kind of run through the rest, ElCog, I actually have as next, although I was a little disappointed in their proposal. There were no samples of any of the brochures or flyers that they'd sent out. They, they were the cheapest, certainly, but they only listed three references, I'm certain there are more. I just don't think they answered our RFP very well. Jensen Strategies was my next one. I will say I just absolutely choked on the price of that one, although I will say that they do score very high in most of the other areas that I had. Also liked their brochures, had a good record. They are from Oregon, but everything in their proposal was about money. And so basically, it really outlined that if you want more, it's going to cost you more, and I really, that really put me off, that one, they're the most expensive, and also just over and over talked about cost. Last was the Prothman folks, which were very similar to the former family members' proposal, but they did not have the experience, and, and so they scored last on my choice.
Counselor Savage?
Thank you so much, Mayor. I did not follow the same grading process in reading through mine, but I did kind of come up with a hierarchy for very similar reasons. I really liked GMP, they were kind of my top one. I was battling between ElCog, because to me, they're reputable, but I was left wanting more information, and so GMP took my top list. One of the folks that they've just filled is, I think, did they work with John Walsh at St. Helen's? He's one of the folks that come recommended, and he is on the board for the League of Oregon Cities, and I know him very well, I really like him, and so the fact that they've kind of thrown out his name flagged it for me, I really like that. But the next one was the other Prothman, but I wasn't as excited about that one. GMP was my number one, Prothman was my two, ElCog was my third, and Jensen, I saw the numbers, and I have to tell you, I didn't even look any further. They may be amazing, I'm sure they're wonderful, but that's a price range that I just came too on right now, it's too much, so it's kind of where I stand.
Counselor Irvin?
Thank you. As I heard the question, what we're trying to answer tonight is who would we like to interview, if I understand that correctly, and it can be multiples, and so I would, I would put it between GMP, Jensen, and LGPS as far as ones I'd like to interview. I think it'd be worth seeing beyond a proposal, you know, what translates in an actual interview, and I don't believe there's any cost associated with an interview. I was, I took, the first approach was just to not look at the costs and just look at what you're getting, and then try to make an assessment of the value of that, and I was, you know, nice to have all these, to compare them to. Things that stood out about Jensen, one was the locality, the very well thought-out and planned-out and expressed scope of work that it walks you through, and I found a lot of value in the, the care and emphasis that they put up front with stakeholders to, to really understand the, you know, what's going on with the city and what challenges are being faced, and I saw that, you know, they, they had no qualms about saying, yep, we're going to be right around 16 weeks. That spoke to me as far as we're going to take the time that it takes to make a good decision. So I'd like to see, you know, if, based on direct expenses and just the fee, they were definitely, you know, quite a bit more, over, over probably 12,000 more than the next, and yeah, so I'd like to interview them and see, is that worth it? Is that, you know, make that assessment? And of course, LGPS agree, I mean, it didn't take long to read, so that was nice, but beyond that, you know, not everybody's the best at a proposal, but if they can really get the job done for inexpensive and we get the product that we want, then I would have no qualms with going that direction either.
Anyone else? Counselor Meridie?
Did anyone else find in the ElCog where they gave some sort of guarantee of hire? Some of the package said that they would replace them if they didn't work out within a year. I couldn't understand.
Yes, if I may, Mayor, Counselor Meridie, GMP, I think at least three of them, except, except ElCog, is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
Provided a guarantee that if the recruitment failed, if, if you followed their recommendations or recruitment failed, you would only pay expenses for them to do it again, and then also if the candidate that you do select leaves within a year, they will recruit again where you just pay expenses. So I appreciated that proposal. And then while I'm chatting, I thought they, it was clear to me all the proposers could get the job done, they had similar timelines. Jensen was going to take longer, which I thought was actually probably more realistic. Some of them were pretty aggressive, but that's okay, we're moving aggressively, and they know how to do this. GMP stood out for me just in their, I thought they, they all clearly could get the job done, have a lot of experience. Some of the, the cities they've recently worked with, like City of Coburg, I think, who is transitioning off of a city administrator who had been there for many, many years, that's a tall order, and I think that's similar to the case that we are in. And I also appreciated the, the look of their, their samples, and I think about, I've been in City Manager's office and Jake Boone's office and seen the stacks of things that come in the mail, so thinking about what would stand out if you're getting a stack of these, these flyers, I think GMP is the one I would want to go with. I don't know that the question is whether we need to interview them or not. If they rise to the top, certainly I'd probably want to meet them and see if, if there is, the rapport is there before we work with them. So I'm, I'm on the fence about needing to interview them, but GMP was my top.
Counselor Stenit, did you have a top?
I would like a short interview with just about everybody. I mean, I think, I personally would get more of them kind of bringing to life their process. I don't know how difficult that could be. I think it's kind of, and again, I would agree with kind of a bit lacking in track record on the ElCog one here, and that's just maybe the proposal, and again, those are questions that could be answered and to satisfy us. I, I mean, I walked at the cost of the Jensen right away, too, because the expenses put that at 30, three odd. It just sounds like a lot for, essentially, we're just trying to catch the right person's attention and bring them in here, and we are making this decision, so. Again, I just think an interview could bring it to life and show a rapport, I think you said rapport, that could really guide us.
Well, I had similar feelings, too. My two top ones, though, are reversed. I have Prothman at number one with the 21 years in the business, the more experienced one, and, and then I have GMP second, but they are close, I've only got them four points apart, so, and then, yeah, I wasn't unfortunately impressed with ElCog either, and I do fear, you know, when they don't put something together, you know, would they, moving forward? So that would be my fear with that. And then, of course, Jensen's price was the one that was kind of holding me back as well. So do you guys, what would you like to do? Do you want to interview maybe, do you want to interview all of them, or do you want to interview top two? What's the?
Counselor Savage?
Thank you so much, Mayor. If I- If I may make the proposal to interview GMP, Prothman, and LCOG. And that kind of leaves Jensen out, but they were also the very highest priced, and kind of listening to everybody, it sounds like, you know, it sounds great, but it also sounds like a lot. So, if we can interview those three, that would be my proposal. But I'm not opposed to hearing them either. I'm just thinking of time.
Counselor?
So, I guess, I'm not opposed to interviewing all four, because it does sound like there's kind of a mix. I'm just wondering if we should have a work session or something, so that we're actually able to put time to this? Because that worries me, if we start, you know, getting into conversations with four different folks, if we don't have at least an hour to go over that, I think we'd have some challenges.
Counselor Mary Day?
I'm just questioning whether we should even bother with Jensen if we never probably happen to be able to afford them, or is there anybody willing to pony up that amount?
If the value is the highest, and you get the best result, which I don't know if that's the case, for a long-term thing, then an upfront investment generally makes sense. Plus, it's an educational piece for us. Always like to hear, hear from them. That better informs us. There was, to Counselor Flex's point, as I was, you know, thinking about coming in tonight and what we're going to talk about, I just kept having a recurring thought, which is, you know, are we, is our house in order enough to engage in this? In terms of our, our goals, you know, there'd be rules. There's some things that are left undone, and maybe we can dual-track. But, you know, trying to put myself in the position of someone being recruited, I think we could do, like, oh, we're about to change things up, or these things, rules, or, so having some more clarity, maybe a series of work sessions to go through that, so that we can present an attractive front, might be a really good idea, and come to terms on that. And then, just one little thought on, you know, I thought of a drawback of having so many placed individuals of high regard, right? And then having a policy that if they're gone within a year, they're, so they're probably not going to draw from that pool to recruit, right? If they, if they placed them, and then they would have to pay to do another series of interviews. And so, there might be some benefit, and, you know, if that was the top talent, maybe we want to see them, too, and attract them. So, just a thought on, on the guarantee as it relates to, and the placement in our areas.
All right. So, it sounds like we're moving towards a work session, and do we want to get that on the calendar?
How does it make sense to schedule them as well at the same time as doing our thing?
It probably would. And you give them notice, and so they could make it fit in their schedule. Yeah.
I was wondering if before our meeting on the 28th?
Oh, on the same day.
Do, do, do we think that we could get responses in a couple of weeks?
For?
For having them available on the 28th?
Oh, yeah, I think you can. In the, in the proposal, we put that we would be trying to get the decision the week of the 24th, somewhere in there. So, that's, they're waiting, you know, they're looking.
And if we ran a little long, we can always, you know, go into our council meeting a little late. So, I, I think that that would be my preference.
Yeah.
And for your information, the 21st, we aren't having Yak, because we're just not getting Yak members with summer. So, you do have the 21st, Monday, the 21st available as well. That's works for you. And I think we could, you could do the work session there, and then give the interviews after that, if we could get them.
And we think we'd be able to contact all in a week?
I think we could, yeah.
Well, I'm available on the 21st.
We can try, but I can't.
That's Monday again?
Yeah.
21st.
Okay. Sounds like Counselor Urban's busy.
Oh, you're busy. Okay.
Anniversary.
Can I clarify? We're talking about a work session to?
Interview.
To interview. Okay, so it's both things at once, not the things Counselor Urban was talking about, like goal setting.
No, I think we're just talking right now about interviewing the four organizations.
Yes. Get our house in order.
So, if we're going to look at doing that before our meeting on the 28th?
The 28th.
What time are we thinking about coming in? An hour early, or an hour and a half early? Do we give each one literally 15 minutes for an interview, or? That doesn't seem like very long. It seems like maybe if we were to be here from like 5:00 to 7:00.
5:00?
5:00?
And do you want time first to talk and kind of go over what you're going to do in the interviews?
Yeah, I think you would want time before, 15 minutes in between, and 20, 20 minutes available for an interview, to give them a fair listen.
And as Counselor Flex said, you know, you can start council meeting anytime after 7:00, so it doesn't have to start at 7:00.
So, what are we talking about for the 21st, then?
We're, we're talking about the 28th at this one.
The 21st was an alternate.
Yeah.
So, 5:00, and then if we run late? You run late? Okay.
Everyone agrees? All right.
And I do want to point out, Dr. Prothman called today, and there is a correction on the top of page five. It is, we will meet with you in person to review semifinals, not via Zoom. That was an old sentence from COVID era, and they just didn't get that caught and evidence.
Well, that's even better.
Is there anything else you want for that meeting on the 28th that you need in interviewing or visiting with them?
Should we have an existing copy of the job description, City Manager?
Yeah, you can have that. 26 years old. It was created when they did their recruitment before. Actually, it was copied out of a book, I think, when they did it.
Probably do some updates on that.
And that's one of the things that they will, if you noticed in their thing, they will, that's part of what they'll go over with you. That's why this one was copied in the book, because they didn't use anybody. They did it themselves.
Well, we'll move on, then, to item D, Concerns of Council.
Counselor Flex?
So, there was a comment about, which wasn't mentioned, H2O program. So, the, the Help to Others program, gosh, I don't even remember how many years ago we did that. Was it six years, five, six years ago?
I think longer.
Longer than that? 2011, wow.
12.
12, must have been 12, because I started in 11. Okay, so, so basically, you know, most of your power bills and all of those things allow folks to round their bill up to help their neighbors, and this is the way this program works. Both Cottage Grove and Cresswell Utilities have the same agreement with community sharing. We receive zero compensation to, you know, distribute these funds. And in fact, I think I would love to try to do another flyer to solicit some more donations, because we only receive, gosh, I want to say $500 a year, maybe. I haven't looked recently, but it's, it's not a huge amount of money. And unfortunately, because of the way our other funding is, we've had to make some pretty dramatic cuts. And so, I think that would be really useful, because as mentioned, our water bills are just getting so expensive. The challenge in that is that if we don't maintain our system, we're going to be in such bad shape. So, while I totally understand people's concerns about how much our water bill is, and I get it. I pay it myself. Community Sharing's water bill is about $350, $60 a month, because we have two meters in a big parking lot. So, so I totally feel folks' pain, but, you know, in the last few years, we've had water mains blow up, the streets above them. We've had huge challenges, you know, and I'm not trying to point fingers, but for years, we buried those pipes in the ground and forgot them, and when we should have actually been replacing the oldest all along. And so, our bill is actually pretty low for a long time compared to what the actual needs of that system are. And so, we're now catching up, when the prices of everything have gone through the roof. So, while I totally understand, I think it's our responsibility to maintain those systems as a result. But, once again, I wanted to just mention that our agency, Community Sharing, receives $0 to administer that program. Thank you.
Anyone else? Counselor Savage?
Thank you so much. I had a whole list of things to talk about at the last city council meeting, but we didn't have concerns from council on the agenda, because it was on a wonky day. So, I thought I'd kind of play catch-up. Something I'm really excited about, but I don't yet know the answer, is on June 14th, the League of Oregon Cities contacted me and said that the Oregon Housing and Community Services has notified them of some vacancies on a governor-appointed Housing Stability Council. And they recommended me to apply, and I did. And since then, they, League of Oregon Cities has written a recommendation letter to the governor to have me a part of this council. It's an in-person council that meets once a month, and it sets, it helps establish strategic direction and policy framework for the OHCS, and set policy and issue decisions related to loans, grants, and funding awards. So, I'm hoping to hear back literally any day now, but I'm really excited about this, and, and feel like we're in a position to have folks be excited with me. Back on June 27th, I was invited to tour the LCC Health Professionals Building. I had a wonderful time. I kind of geek out on new construction. It's just something I find very exciting. This building is gigantic, and it's going to be housing educational spaces for medical assistants, dental hygienists, and dental assistants, and EMT folks that are training and recertifying. These are already programs that Eugene's-based LCC has already, so it's not necessarily opening up a capacity, but it's just unfolding the classrooms and placing them in better classrooms. What I found really exciting is they'll have an ambulance bay, and these folks are going to be rappelling from the second floor down to the ambulance bay, and then having to climb back up again just to show their stamina and their strength, and you never know what kind of situation you're going to find yourself in. So, it's kind of a really unique project. Some of these folks can also potentially do internships at our Community Health Center based here at our LCC campus in Cottage Grove. So, it's a really interesting partnership that the two buildings will have. So, I toured that on June 27th. I toured again on August 9th. I could not believe how much they had gotten done. The floors have been poured, the walls are up, the framework is going in. It's just absolutely thrilling to see how fast they're moving. I have some stats and stuff that I will give to our city recorder, so if you're interested in knowing more about how this project was funded, it was funded through a bond measure that the, the public had to vote on, and then also, if that passed, then the Oregon State would give $8 million. Well, it did pass, so they also got $8 million. So, the numbers are just astronomical. When I was there on August 9th, I had the pleasure of meeting Representative Nancy Matheson, who also was touring the site. So, I, I love to network. I like how the chief had mentioned earlier that we just received the dog because of different networking possibilities that, and connections that he had made. So, anytime that we get to network with any sort of official, I think we absolutely should do that. On August 1st, I had the pleasure of meeting Representative Charlie Conrad over the phone. We visited for about a half an hour. He's really outstretching his hand. He calls himself a freshman representative, but he wants to get to know each and every one of us, and see what he can do to help us. So, I encourage you to give him a call and take a meeting with him. He's incredibly engaging and really easy to speak with. On Saturday, I was able to attend the town hall, which gave a legislative update. This is getting information right from the folks who are making these decisions. It's not like the LOC giving their Friday update, which is just as informative, but this is very, very fascinating to hear right from the folks who are making the decisions. There were four different representatives and Senator Manning that were there. It was absolutely incredible. I got to speak with all of them. Senator Manning said he would like an invite to our, our city council, even though he doesn't necessarily represent us, he would love an invite. So, I invited him tonight, but it's a little too soon. So, coming at some point in time, he would like to attend, and so we'll keep you posted about that. One of the things that the legislators were talking about was Measure 110, and how it does not seem to present the way that it was intended. They concluded this meeting by talking about how the, the intentions of this were good, but we're clearly seeing that it needs to be reorganized. And I love that the folks that kind of put this together are saying we need to readdress it. I know the county commissioners came out, and they did a unity voice that says, you guys, we need to relook at this and revisit this. And I would love it if we, as Cottage Grove City Council, could come together and said, yes, let's revisit. We support a revisit of Measure 110. Thank you for doing that, just helping add to the voice to create that revisit. Clearly, it's not working, so let's take a look at that. So, I don't know if you guys would like to join me in doing that, but I think that's really important. The Emergency Preparedness Fair was amazing. It was hot outside, but the kids were going crazy in the bouncy house and the slushy cones and the backpacks, and running and getting all of their, their papers stamped, their passports stamped. It was really a lot of fun. I always learn something new every time I go. With these fires that have really roared up in the last few days, we should extend a thank you to the rodeo grounds, because they are housing folks with animals. They've opened up their doors for people who need to escape from McKenzie. I think it's really important that we, as a community, come together and support the rodeo grounds. What can we do to help in times of crisis? We do really, really well of coming together and providing those kind of services. I will also point out that we have a League of Oregon Cities Director, Roberto Escobedo, from NISA, and he is fighting those fires in McKenzie for us. And so, I'd like to acknowledge his work with them. Being the representative of the council on the Chamber of Commerce Board, I'd like to publicly announce that we have canceled the Concerts in the Park for Wednesday due to the heat and due to the air quality. So, we're really, really sad to miss this band. They're a traveling band. They're absolutely incredible, but the safety of our citizens are the most important thing. And then, lastly, I'll conclude by really encouraging anybody who has not signed up for the LOC conference in October, please do so. This is right in our backyard. It's not here very often, and it's going to be really a lot of fun. You just went to the Mayor's Conference, Mayor Solsby. It's like drinking from a fire hose. The networks and the friendships and the conversations and the classes and just being in that space, you tend to just learn so much. It's just amazing. So, I'd really encourage, if you haven't signed up, please do so. Thank you.
Anyone else? Counselor Durham?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to also echo the focus on emergency preparedness. Right now, it's smoky and it's hot. We are experiencing excessive heat warnings. We are experiencing excessive heat warnings. More and more, I am thankful for our emergency responders. I'm glad that we're able to be recognized this morning. We only have so many emergency responders, and in the event of a larger event like a Cascadia Subduction Zone earthquake, we will have to rely on our friends and neighbors because the emergency responders will have to triage, and they can't be everywhere at once. So I'd like to see as a city, think about things that we can do to incentivize the programs like Map Your Neighborhood, where you get to know who's your neighbor, who's elderly, who might, who would you need to check on, who has pets, who has children, things like that. I'd really like us to focus more on how we can be prepared as a community and set that leadership from the council. Also, for staff, the Oregon Department of Emergency Management should be releasing their FEMA BRIC grant opportunity soon, the Building Resilient Infrastructure for Communities, which is a pre-hazard mitigation opportunity. It's newer to FEMA. Usually FEMA just responds after in FEMA fashion, which isn't that great. They know this. But pre-hazard mitigation is something they're working on. It's a newer grant program, so I'd like to see if there's any large-scale capital projects that the city could put up for that grant opportunity, as well as the state legislature allocated funding for resilience hubs. I think we have some facilities that might be good candidates for resilience hubs. And so I encourage staff to reach out to OEM about how is that money going to come to communities? How do they determine who gets those? Because I think we're well situated on the I-5 corridor, being a medium-sized city, that we should be able to see if we can have some of that investment.
Mayor? Well, today, we had a Land Economic Committee meeting, met again, and had a good presentation from Lane Community College going over the career technical education programs that are going in and the new infrastructure that was funded by that $121 million bond that passed. And I was just generally pleased with the direction that Lane Community College is going under their new leadership. And a couple of stats that kind of stood out to me were, you know, so they have a number of programs from millwright training, welding, different apprenticeship kind of based in, or trades-based programs. Then they also have aeronautics is still up and going, and there's a drone flying program. You were saying that the drone flying program is, you know, they've got quite a waiting list, but those jobs with a two-year certificate are started at six figures. And the pilot programs, at least in our current situation, you know, entry points are in the 90,000, upward of 250,000 a year. So there's training that can be had here locally that is recognized, it's world-class in our backyard, and just want to encourage students to be looking at that as a real viable option to have a good sustained career. And it's, we didn't get too much into the affordability, but I know they are flexible and they're driven in terms of their schedules based on the demand. So it can be after-hours, extra, you know, training for career shifts and so on. And I know we have, I think one of my neighbors teaches one of the millwright programs, so we've got local representation even there. So great, great resource. The conversation also turned to something that I'm excited and anticipating, which is, I think, kind of a follow-up to that presentation we had from the consultant that came in and talked about the industry and economy here in town and the opportunities for improvement. Some years ago, I think it was one of these LOC meetings that was in Bend, ran across a presentation from Visit Bend. And to this day, it stood out to me as like, they're on to something that would work here as far as promotion of the natural assets, the guided tours, things that can pop up, public-private kind of partnership in that, you know, just need someone with an entrepreneurial mindset to take hold. I know we've talked about some upriver ideas that are still very viable, I think. And so Carrie Westlin is one of the representatives from travel in county, and she said, hey, before we go there, let me come back and present what we're doing. We have captured or have, you know, acquired a lot of the data-driven, the data that is used to make data-driven decisions as far as buying decisions, movement, so that cell phone data. And it's not easily, you know, it's cost prohibitive for a lot of groups. So the conversation turned to partnering in all of our disparate groups to share that, those resources and share the things that are working in our region and what opportunities we could have in Cottage Grove, what's working in other places. So I'm excited to continue to pursue that and to bring whatever we can as far as opportunities for vitality in industry and business here in Cottage Grove, just for the overall quality of life. Follow-up on, so I mentioned this on Friday, Peace Health has a program, a housing placement program, where they reach out and they try to secure housing for displaced, their displaced workers as a result of the fire. And I think two weeks ago, before these got this big, they'd reached out to say, hey, do you have available housing? And this could be a room, this could be, you know, just accommodations. So I would encourage anyone that's interested or has some capacity to reach out to Peace Health. I think it's the housing, their housing program, and they're trying to place, a lot of them are traveling physical or healthcare workers, but trying to place them so they can keep up on the demand at the hospital. I went back through my notes on prior concerns of council, and so I just want to cycle back through some that haven't materialized or I think are still pending. I think back in November of '22, requested that we get a presentation from South Lane Mental Health, understood that they were going through maybe some internal turmoil. But I think it's relevant, you know, the status of healthcare and what is being provided here, I think is something that we should collectively all be kind of on the same page as. And to that, I called Charlie Conrad today, left a message, so hopefully he'll get back to me, asking him that very question. So what are we doing? What are we doing about this? This is affecting us. So look forward to seeing what he has to say about that. Another item are the city tours. Heard a lot of positive feedback on those, more awareness from the residents here about the infrastructure, the costs, the operations that go into it. It is positive, it's beneficial. So I'd like to see those start up at some point, whether it's in the same form or not, but the end result being getting more people to interact with the city, staff, and facilities. And then finally, like an update on the Taylor Street sidewalk. I noticed that most of it's done, but there is a, looks like, I don't know if holdout is the right word to put, it's just my perception as I drive by, of what's going on there. The plan of finishing, that is.
Mr. Durham?
Mayor, Councilor Irvin, the residents that have, there's two properties that have not finished their concrete work yet. They chose to do it on their own, and they have until the end of September to have it done, or we will mobilize and get it done. That being said, Mr. Cartwright's been in a couple of times, he is assisting those residents. I'm surprised they haven't been poured yet. He was scheduled to pour, but had to remove a fence that he wasn't planning on removing. So I expect him to be poured any time. I think that the forms have been checked for compliance, so that project should be done. We have paid the bill, and we are going to be sending it out, payment request to the property interest reimburses for the work. I think it will be done shortly.
Thank you. Councilor Mary Dick?
Yes, I was, as I was reviewing my notes for the, this meeting, under the requests for proposals for the new city manager, something jumped out at me of the criteria for selecting a new city manager, and one was to develop a profile for the community and the position that will highlight the opportunities and the characteristics of the community. And I was thinking with the, I want to kind of circle back to Ms. Olson when she was speaking, with our current situation of questioning whether we're going to retain our current city government or restructure it. You know, certainly, it's the right of the people to use this tool, but as we attempt to attract a new city manager, what are we, what is our community profile going to look like and the opportunities for a new city manager to come in? If we're trying to attract someone that is going to do a good job here, I think we need to show some kind of unity in our community to attract the best person. If we're, if we're going to like have our profile being, oh, this is the Wild West, I don't know what we're going to quite get for a manager. So I'm hoping that we can come together and get this settled in a reasonable and civil way without resorting to the ballot box. I know one of the key issues is dissatisfaction with the unhoused, and I think it might be time for us to, in the cleanup our house department, to circle back and reevaluate how our program is going, as well as some of the other aspects that we've chosen to do. I think we, I think we tried to do the best that we could at the time, and now we'll see where we can to make some adjustments so that more members of the community will support what is happening. So that's what I would like to see.
Cassidy?
Thank you, Mayor Solzby. I just wanted to let everyone know that this is my last city council meeting. I'm leaving for college next Friday. I'm really excited, but I really just wanted to thank everyone here, the council, mayor, former mayor, Mr. Myers, Mindy, Mr. Stewart, Jake, and Ms. Lykins, that, just thank you. I've learned a lot, and I'm really grateful for the opportunities Yak has provided me, and I will continue to encourage anyone to join and participate in their community because it's been a lot of fun, and like I said, I've learned a lot. So thank you so much.
Well, I, I had the great pleasure of, Cassidy was the winner of our If I Were Mayor competition, as probably most of you know, and they, I got the pleasure to give her her first-place award and her check. And she got a standing ovation after her video was played, which she was absolutely humiliated that we made her get up there. But she did a great job and spoke to the audience, and I personally am so proud of her, and we all wish you the best ever, Cassidy. You're going to do very well in life.
Thank you.
Did anyone else have anything?
I did attend the Oregon Mayors Association meeting, and it was probably my favorite meeting yet. And my most, what I get the most out of are any of the mayor roundtables, and where I can actually just sit and talk to other mayors and find out, you know, how are you handling things in your city? And, you know, share our successes, share, you know, things that aren't going so well, and exchange ideas so that we can all move forward in a positive way, we hope, for our cities. And getting to know some of these mayors, there are some real characters out there. And one of them, chief, is your old mayor, Keith, and he was a really great guy and had very nice things to say about you. I told him that he was wrong, but he didn't believe me. And, but yeah, there's, there's some great established mayors out there that I definitely feel I can learn a lot from. I've exchanged a lot of contacts, and I look forward to moving forward with that. You're right, one of the biggest things that we were talking about was the decriminalization of drugs. The homeless issue, of course, was a huge topic. We had a day and a half probably that we talked about that. They did divide our classrooms into two, and it was cities of 10,000 and smaller and 10,000 and larger. And so I'm like, okay, we're right at 10,700. So what I did is I kind of went back and forth between the two, trying to get as much information as I could that would pertain to us potentially, without being too big of ideas for our small town. So yeah, it was very, very productive. I look forward to going back to another one of the Oregon Mayors meetings. And yeah, that's about it. No one else? Cassidy, thank you.
Where are you going, Cassidy?
I'm going to George Fox University. I'm going to double major and swim on their swim team up there, so I'm pretty excited for that.
My mom is very sad.
All right. Business from a city manager. Cost of living allowance for city manager. Richard Poms?
All of the full-time and regular employee salaries have been adjusted by the 5% cost of living allowance, all of our bargaining units as well. The only remaining full-time, regular full-time employee is myself, and so I'm asking for the COLA increase as well, starting July 1st.
Councilor Flack?
So I guess I'll just jump in. You know, this, something we've done every year for 26 years, is that we typically would wait for our review and then do it retroactive to July 1st. So I totally support this, you know, as our city manager is going to be retiring before our, you know, well, before having an evaluation. So I guess I'll go ahead and make the motion. I move that the city council increase the city manager's salary by the cost of living allowance of 5% effective July 1, 2023.
Second. We have a motion, second. Any discussion?
Mayor? Thank you. I think similar to how we increased the pay for the chief of police prior to recruiting, I think this will help us to recruit a new city manager, so I support it for that reason.
Councilor Savage?
Thank you so much, Mayor. I think it's really good to talk about the folks that don't want this to happen. And the reason that I think we should talk about it is if we were to say no, we do not want to do this, this then breaches our contract with our city manager, which then in turn costs us more money than just a simple 5%. So while I fully believe that this is deserved, and more so, I think we need to just really say this is not a merit, this is a lateral, this is something that is across the board, this is not a kudos, this is something that could potentially breach his contract and end up costing the city so much more because of the contract that's built. And that's not why we're giving it, but that's why we're not, not giving it. Because I think I've heard, does that make sense? There's some chatter saying, let's not do this. And I think it's very valuable to talk about the importance of why we are. So I hope that makes sense.
Councilor Irvin?
I mean, I wasn't aware of a contract breach.
I don't think there is any.
You don't think so?
No, no, we said...
If everybody in that platform gets a 5% COLA raise, if we don't equally give him a COLA raise, that doesn't...
Yeah, no, he's, he's our one employee, and so if we adopt the budget, you know, and then, you know, which approves the other wages, but we are the ones who approve the judge and the city manager. So we're not obligated to do anything. It's just, as far as I'm concerned, the right thing to do. You know, we've always done that historically, where, you know, the city manager would get the same wage increases as the department heads, you know, as Councilor Durham mentioned, to keep our supervisors ahead of the folks that they're working under them. So I mean, it's just the appropriate thing to do, but we're not obligated to do it.
Yes, you are.
Okay.
In the, in the employment agreement with the city manager, there's a severance provision that if you don't give, you reduce the salary or not give it to increase as everyone else, then it can activate the termination clause and you'd be responsible for severance.
Okay, I guess I'd have to reread that, that what I read 20-some years ago.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, I don't remember that.
Thank you. That answers that question.
So did you, I'm sorry, Counselor Savage, did you read that in the contract?
It is something that I think we should all be aware of, and it still brings us, even with the 5% increase, we're still below probably what other people are doing in similar cities for our next city manager.
Yeah, I understand that, but I'm just wondering how you knew. Did you read it? I'm curious.
I have conversations with folks.
Okay. All right, thank you. All right. Did you not have conversations with folks after we got our packet to ask questions?
No, that was just, that was just something that came out of the blue for me that I've never heard, so I was curious.
But we didn't know, none of us know. So, all right.
Call the question.
Call the question.
Let's vote on it.
Do you want to vote?
Yeah.
So don't we need a motion?
I did make a motion.
Okay. So we have a motion?
Do we have a second?
Yeah.
So we just.
Oh, actually, we have two, I think both you and Counselor Savage. Picking seconds.
So it's just a motion, right?
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any nays? No, motion carries. All right. Report from city manager.
I don't have anything that wasn't already said.
All right. So no city attorney? This meeting is adjourned.